We will now reconvene the City Council's special meeting. Are there any final actions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No final action tonight.
All right. We will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, May 9th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members, Chalamchela.
Here.
Roba.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Kozlowski is absent.
All right. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
Yes, Madam Mayor. There is a revised staff report and additional information for item 12. A copy of those documents were previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next item?
The next item this evening is Business from the Floor.
Okay. Business from the Floor is the public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There's a speaker timer on the podium in front of you that will display the time you have remaining on your three minutes. The color will change to yellow when you have 30 seconds and turn to red and blink when your three minutes are completed. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have an equal opportunity to address the City Council. Are there any requests to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We have one request to speak this evening under this item, and the first speaker and the only speaker is Scott Rafferty.
Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. So when I was here two weeks ago, you had an opportunity to settle the lawsuit. For whatever reason, you didn't. And now it's fully briefed, so we'll get a decision in about six months. Your city attorney told you what's going to happen about a year and a half ago. We're going to get our map, and nothing's really changed to alter that assessment. But I just want to have a thought experiment. What if I walk outside this building and get run over by a bus? My clients can't afford another attorney, and you just win your lawsuit by default. What then? What happens to Folsom? So you get your map, the map that your own former city attorney said was shameful, a map that drives YK off the council. So you will have, if you get lucky with the open seat, a council of five white Republicans in a city, which between the last two census has gone from 67% to 56% white, and in the first year after the census, down to 54%. And the Republican Party, because of what you've done over the last two years, since we filed this lawsuit, the Republican Party has lost six points vis-à-vis the Democratic Party, including Mr. Chalamchela. You have driven people out of that party by appealing to what you envision as this white grievance. But your own attorneys filed thousands of pages in court, including a map of the 330 people that initially petitioned for this, every nook and cranny of your city, far more than people that are supporting at-large elections. Now, you may have your echo chambers of friends and family that are telling you you're fighting some righteous jihad, but what happens next? You get your map. It's not going to work forever. You know, you're not going to be a majority-white city forever. And what happens to Folsom? You're going to go and you're going to go back to at-large? That takes voter approval, and the voters don't approve of at-large elections. You need to take that in. And so what are you fighting about? Are you fighting about you want to blow a hole? Mr. Aquino wants to blow a hole in a law that's designed to protect, among others, it's designed to protect everybody, but including Asian-Americans, most of which live in her district. You know, you violated the Brown Act at every single meeting, and you had to sign a cease and desist letter? So I just ask you, think about what you're doing, because you're not going to be remembered well in the history of the city unless you do right by the voters and establish equality for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Will the clerk please call the next item?
The next item on this evening's agenda will be Consent Calendar.
Okay. And we've been asked to pull number 12?
Yes, and I'd also like to pull number seven, please. So if nobody else wants to pull anything, I will move adoption of six, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers, Chalamchela.
Yes.
Roba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Item number seven?
Yeah, I can take it from here. Thank you. So first of all, this is our Legislative Platform and Advocacy Manual. First of all, I want to thank our library director. Where is he? There he is. When we think about going to bat with the state and preserving our interests, the library does not come to the top of my mind. So I want to thank you for putting those things in there, because that would never have occurred to me, but I think they're really great additions. So first of all, thank you, Tom. But secondly, as my colleagues will remember, a few months ago, Lieutenant Emery and I went to the state Capitol to voice our opposition on behalf of the city to AB 742, which would, among other things, prohibit law enforcement agencies from using canines to apprehend suspects. And as I said at the time, I don't think we, as a society, continue to, can continue to take all of law enforcement's non-lethal tools away and then be outraged when they are only left with the option of using lethal force. So what I would like to add to this policy platform and advocacy manual is some sort of language, and I don't need to get the exact wording right tonight. I can leave it to the city manager, to wordsmith with the police chief, but something to the effect of, "We'll support legislation that preserves non-lethal means for law enforcement officers when apprehending suspects," or something to that effect. And whether you want to say that we support that type of legislation or we oppose removing non-lethal options, I'm fine either way, but I would just like to propose that we add some sort of language like that to our manual.
I'd be happy to work that in if there's consensus among the council.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Then with that, I will move adoption of Resolution Number 11023 and direct the city manager to work with the police chief to add language to that effect.
I second that.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers, Chalamchela.
Yes.
Roba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And the next item is number two.
The next item this evening under Consent Calendar is item number 12, Resolution Number 11035, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Folsom Historic District Association, FHDA, for operation of an ice rink on city property. And this evening, we do have four requests to speak on this item. The first speaker will be Jim Harville, followed by Karen Holmes.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. Mayor Rodriguez, Council, keep it short and simple. I say whatever Jerry says. Thank you.
Will be Karen Holmes, and then after that will be Jerry Bernau.
Good evening, Karen.
Hello, everybody. I am here again, just as nervous as I ever am every time. But I just, I am here, obviously, to talk about this MOU and the addition of a rental fee, and would love to ask if we can update that MOU and not include a rental fee for the MOU. So I know that you all have the history of the ice rink, and you don't need to know all the minutia that we're going into, but I just have a couple of key points to make. The first, the plaza was built with redevelopment money, and that redevelopment money was and put that redevelopment money built that plaza to be an economic driver for the city, for the historic district. And so far, it has worked brilliantly. That plaza is busy. We are able to, that is our key marketing area in the district, and it works really well for us. So the ice rink is our single greatest marketing moment of our entire year, and it brings enormous numbers of people to the district. In the two months that we do it, somewhere between 22,000 and 40,000 people in those two months. So it is essential that we have that ice rink, and in that, it keeps our businesses visible, viable, and healthy. So this is wonderful. FHDA has been running the ice rink in the district for 12 to 13 years now, and essentially, we have figured out how to run an ice rink in that area and break even. We, sometimes we make money, some years we're up, some years we're down, but if you were to average the annual numbers over the 12 years that we have done this, you would find that, we accept the COVID year, because for a lot of reasons, that year was an anomaly. You would find that we make an average of $3,800 a year. When we make that money, okay, we have $3,800 that we put back into the district. When we lose that money or other amounts, we have to find another place in our budget to take it out. So it's obvious FHDA is nonprofit. Any of the money we make from the rink goes back into the district. We're a volunteer board, so there's no overhead. There's nothing there. Judy and her staff, that money comes from the P-Bid. So the money generated is reinvested and continues to work within the historic district. As part of our original MOU, the FHDA has always met with city representatives before the setup and after the teardown of the rink, so that we can decide if there are any damages or repairs that need to be made. We intend to keep that part of the bargain. We want to be good stewards of the plaza. So in 2017, we were presented with a bill for damages that had happened, and we paid that bill. So that bill has been paid. The work was outlined to be performed by a city contractor, and while we did pay that bill, the scope of that work has not yet been complete. So we're a little bit concerned about some of the damages that may be counted or looked at as we go forward.
Karen, you have 10 seconds.
Yep. In conclusion, we think this is a win-win situation. We feel very good about having the ice rink there, and we hope you do, too.
Thank you, Karen.
The next speaker will be Jerry Bernau, and followed by Jim Snuck, which will be our last speaker on this item.
Good evening, Jerry.
Mayor, members of the council. I've been involved in the ice rink since the chamber started with the city back in 2008, out there on the skid loader level in the gravel, and I got to tell you, it is a wonderful event. I think we brought over 500 to 600,000 people over that period of time. These are very difficult to make financially feasible to even break even. I know Elk Grove tried one, and I think they spent $100,000 to $150,000 subsidy to make that happen. I know Placerville did. They had the same problem. They haven't been able to repeat it. We've been able to figure out how to make it work. But the most fun is all the kids laughing, enjoying, and having a wonderful time during the season. This year, we took over the operations to bring up the quality. We brought up the ice quality, brought up the customer experience, and you know, we had 32 kids we hired, half of which had never had a job before, you know? So it's not just about the economic piece of it, which obviously it is for our district and for the businesses, but it's a wonderful event, outdoor event, for our community. It's about $450,000 to put this thing on, and we're excited about bringing a new rink that's been fabricated, made in Italy, and it'll even up, bring up the level in customer experience back around the iconic turntable. And I appreciate Jim Harville, because we're around a landmark turntable, and it's fun to have an icon for Folsom's history right in the middle of our ice rink. So again, rental fee is a killer for us. We're just barely being able to break even during that period of time, and so we'd hope we've kept you from subsidizing this except for year one back in 2008. We'd hope that we could not have that rental fee, and we can continue to pursue it for another 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, thank you for having me here. By the way, thank you for all the years of basically partnering with us on the ice rink, because it has been 12 years, and it's been incredible. I was going to, I was looking at our bylaw mission statement, just breezing through it. I want to read the last two points of it. There are six points, but I highlighted the last two, and this is the FHDA. "To promote and enable a healthy and productive economic climate within the Folsom Historic District." And the last point, "To contribute to the overall welfare of the city of Folsom." And we do follow our mission statement in anything that we do. So that's the first point. Then, you know, we've had this 10-year commitment. We just finished, we're transitioning to a new equipment provider. Basically, we want to up the level of both the rink and the level of the customer service, and that's why last year was our first year of actually operating the rink. We want a better customer service experience. So, and by the way, I've always said you don't even have to skate to walk by and just see how special it is, seeing the smiling faces and everything. It's incredible. But just, you've heard everybody else what they've had to say. The last thing I just want to say is that we're about to sign a five-year contract. We've had to delay it because we didn't have a secured MOU, and if we don't get it tonight, we won't be able to have a rink, because we're already under, we've, you know, gone past our deadline of getting a deposit to our equipment provider. And last year was a great test, because we couldn't make the numbers work last year. We switched from, you know, our old equipment guy. New guy came in, he's looking at the donut or the ring, not a donut, and we just couldn't make the numbers work. It's a huge commitment for us, so we had to call him and say, "We can't do it." Well, he came back to us with, "I do have in my warehouse a rectangular rink," and that's why we had the rectangular rink. And we pulled it together very, very quickly. It was a little stressful, but we did it. It was successful. But now we've formed that relationship with him, which has been fantastic, because he's come back to us with numbers that we feel we can break even with if we raise it a dollar per skater. So we've got the budget prepared. We're about to make a, it's $450,000 a year for five years. That's what we're committing to, and so if we're going to do it, we need to have that secured tonight, so that tomorrow we can cut him a check, I can sign the contract, and we can, he can get the equipment ordered. It's coming out of Italy. He even made a trip to Vienna, Austria to check out this equipment, and it's fantastic stuff. They put it all over the place. There's a place in Austria called Ice World, and it's like millions of dollars every year they put into this, but it's incredible. So we're super excited about it, and I've said I'm ready to sign and get this going. So we just ask that item 25, any kind of rental fee, if we had to do any kind of additional fee, we would have to just say, pull back and say, "We just can't do this," because we're already, you know, making as big a commitment as I feel we can do representing our association as executive board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other requests to speak?
We do not have any further requests to speak on this item.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. You backtrack.
So how about if I make a motion to kind of focus this discussion? So I'm going to move that we adopt Resolution Number 11035, but strike number 25.
A second.
Okay. So Madam Mayor, if I could kick off the discussion about this. First of all, I want to thank our staff, because we have given clear direction as a council to try to, you know, recover costs and that sort of thing. So I want to thank them for looking at this option. But I think it's a delicate balancing act, because there are some events and some, you know, things that are so iconic and part of the fabric of Folsom, and I think the ice skating rink is certainly one of those. And as I shared at the last council meeting, the mayor of Citrus Heights told me recently that he and his wife and granddaughter came skating at Folsom's skating rink, right? And I love to hear that. So, you know, it definitely kind of gives you this Norman Rockwell, you know, feeling when you look at that. So I do want the ice rink to continue, which is why I'm willing to support this, and I understand that they typically don't, you know, it's a struggle to break even. But I would also point out, just because we do represent the taxpayers, number five in the MOU, which I believe you do not have any issue with, because it has been in there, talks about FHDA shall be solely responsible to arrange for and pay any and all costs associated with the ice rink, yada, 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 including restoration and repair of the premises, including but not limited to concrete, railings, and landscaping at the end of the season. And so, you know, as long as we can agree on that part, that, my understanding, because of the heating and the cooling and the freezing, whatever, that there, it does result in some damage to the concrete, that there needs to be, you know, as you said, you know, you paying your share of that. So I'm willing to support, no rental fee, but keeping that number five in place, so.
Okay. So we have a motion. Or any other comments?
I just want to thank you, too. I, well, I apologize that this took so long. I know that you guys had to delay your decision, your MOU with the new provider, and so I think just as, I think it's a great thing for the city. I would hate, I'm so glad to hear the positivity from this council, because I would hate to be the council that gets rid of the ice rink. So at least for five years, you know, it looks like we're going to be, going to be great, and it's going to be a great year to see the new ice rink, so.
Yeah.
Well, I have the privilege of, you know, for the past eight years, have been in the historic district, and I'm always asking people, "Oh, are you a local or are you a visitor?" And during the Christmas season, it's great to hear from people who are visiting the historic district, who are bringing their families to skate. And so the ice skating rink just brings, gives the whole entire city a positive recognition throughout just the area, where people just bring their families, drive in, and skate, have fun. All right, so.
As Jim said, even, I'm not a ice skater, but I come around, and yeah, it's gorgeous, and there are so many, so many families watching their little ones skating around, and adults as well. This is an iconic event for this entire region, at least in our area. Thank you. I know it's a lot of volunteer work. I know, I do see it. I can speak for that, being a Volunteer of the Year Award last year. It's a lot of work. Thank you so much, FHDA, for bringing that iconic program to the city of Folsom.
So we have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers, Chalamchela.
Yes.
Roba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Can I make one comment? I just want to, I just want the public to know that Mike sent a letter, and he's not able to be here, Councilmember Kozlowski, but very much in support. There are a lot of details in here of the ice rink and the FHDA, and they're, so just wanted to mention that for Mike.
All righty. Okay. Will the clerk please call the next item?
The next item on this evening's agenda is Scheduled Presentations. Item number one, Introduction of New Parks and Recreation Director, Kelly Gonzalez.
Thank you. Could I ask Kelly to come down? All right. Good evening, everyone. I am very pleased to share that I have named Kelly Gonzalez as our new Parks and Recreation Director. Kelly's first day on the job was yesterday, and she is already overseeing the operations of 48 parks, over 50 miles of paved trails, facilities, and recreation programs. She's managing current and future park development initiatives and serves as an advisor to the Folsom Parks and Recreation Commission, and she will be overseeing the department's 48 full-time and 200-plus seasonal employees. When Mr. Bernau mentioned hiring so many young people at the ice rink, we, too, at the city, we are the, many teenagers' first job, and it's often in Parks and Rec. Kelly joins our leadership team with a wealth of experience in parks, recreation, leadership, and administration, as well as a proven track record of cultivating a strong sense of community. She previously served as the Division Head for the Kasumnis Community Services District for the past 16 years, in both the administration and Parks and Recreation Departments. The Kasumnis CSD serves a population of over 200,000 residents in South Sacramento County and provides emergency medical service, fire protection, parks, and recreation services. Kelly was instrumental in the development and implementation of multiple parks and recreation master plans and strategic plans, and under her service areas of responsibilities, Kasumnis CSD has been recognized for several award-winning programs, events, facilities, community outreach, and marketing efforts. I am very thrilled to welcome Kelly, and I know she will enjoy a long and successful career here, and with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly, who might want to say a few words.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. It's a pleasure and honor to be here today, and thank you to our city manager for the warm welcome, and also to staff. Look forward to working with you and all the initiatives to enhance and improve, to continue and to improve our Parks and Recreation Services. I look forward to getting to work to improve our services in the community. So thank you very much, and again, it's an honor to be here.
Welcome, Kelly. I want to share a text I received today from a very familiar name of Felipe Rodriguez, Chief Felipe Rodriguez. Text today and said, "Kelly is an amazing person. Folsom is fortunate to have her. Elaine is blessed to have her and has a great new addition to her team. Our loss, your gain." So a nice compliment.
All right. Thank you very much.
Right. I have a very similar comment as well. I think when Elaine announced this almost two weeks ago, I was in DC, and the regional team was there, and Kasumnis, your Board of Directors, were also there. They sat next to me there, talking all the great things she's bringing, and as I see the numbers now, like you are managing the 200,000, 200,000 people services for Parks and Rec. And even in this city, by knowing the numbers, you probably have the largest headcount, including part-time and other people, interns and all those. So it's our Parks and Recreation System is in good hands, and this town is known for nature and parks and great trails and all those. And congratulations, and we are looking forward to working with you.
All right. Thank you for the kind comments.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the next item?
The next item under Scheduled Presentations. The next item under Scheduled Presentations, item number two, Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom, proclaiming May 14 through the 20th, 2023, as National Police Officers Memorial Week in the City of Folsom.
Come on over here. Is this on? Yes. Okay. So this next week, we pay tribute to the fallen heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Commander Brian Lockhart and Lieutenant David Canepa will receive the proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom, proclaiming May 14 through the 20th as National Police Officers Memorial Week in the City of Folsom. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Week and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 80 sworn members of the City of Folsom Police Department, who worked devotedly and selflessly on behalf of the residents of the City of Folsom regarding of the peril or hazard to themselves, whereas since the first known line-of-duty death in 1786, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice. And the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, which was dedicated in 1991 in Washington, DC. In 2022, 240 federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers died in the line of duty. This number represents a 65% decrease as compared to the previous year, where nearly 500 officers died solely as a result of COVID-19. The service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored, and the names of the officers newly engraved on the memorial will be formally dedicated during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's Annual Candlelight Vigil to be held on the evening of Saturday, May 13, 2023, where May 15, 2023, is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all of the fallen officers and their families. Now, therefore, I, Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14 through the 20th as National Police Officers Memorial Week in the City of Folsom, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation, proclaimed on this ninth day of May 2023. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I'll just make it real quick. I know I speak on behalf of everybody at the police department. We're very thankful and blessed to work in a city where the by and large, everyone supports us and is good to us, so, thank you.
The next item-
The next item under scheduled presentations is item number three, proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of May 2023 as National Skin Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom.
So this is Keenan Davis. And I met Keenan several months ago when he gave an actual TEDx talk at TEDx Folsom on skincare prevention or skincare cancer prevention. And I was really impressed. And I'll let you, you can share a little about who you are after, because you are such a neat young man. And and so I think it's really big of you to have, one, done a TEDx talk at the age of 17. Is that right?
Yeah.
Seventeen. Yeah. So this is Keenan Davis, and he will receive the proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of May 2023 as National Skin Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom. Whereas skin, skin is the largest and most viable organ of the body and performs many essential tasks, such as regulating body temperatures, protecting internal organs, provision sensation, and supporting metabolic functions. Whereas skin cancer is the most common cancer in the United States. Currently estimates are that there are one in five Americans will develop skin cancer in their lifetime. And approximately 9,500 people are diagnosed with skin cancer every day, and approximately 20 people die of melanoma, the deadliest form of skin cancer each day. Skin Cancer Awareness Month is a public education initiative designed to promote the prevention and early detection of melanoma and other skin cancers. Now therefore, I, Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Skin Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom and encourage our community to increase awareness about the importance of early detection and treatment of this disease proclaimed on this ninth day of May 2023. So right after I met Keenan on when he gave his TEDx talk, or it was that weekend, he asked me, is, you know, will will the City of Folsom do a proclamation on the Prevention of Skincare Month? And so I I was really impressed with him. He's a really neat young man. And so would you like to say a few words?
First of all, I would just like to thank you for this honor. And I just appreciate that we're bringing more awareness to this issue. As she mentioned, skin cancer is the most common cancer in America, and it's estimated about one in five Americans will be diagnosed in their lifetime. So I thank you for bringing awareness to this issue.
I'll just say to Keenan and his family, you're welcome to stay for the budget discussion, but if you get up and leave, you will not offend us. Okay?
All right. Will the clerk please call the next item?
The next item under scheduled presentations is item number four, presentation from Heart of Folsom, Homeless Assistant Resource Team Regarding the Winter Shelter.
Good evening, city council, mayor, vice mayor, staff people, and everyone who's here. I'm glad to be here. My name's Beverly Sees. I was the director of the winter shelter in Folsom this winter. And and I'm honored to give you sort of a recap of of our season. It was a really good season in a ministry of compassion of the City of Folsom involving many, many volunteers and grateful guests. We ran from January 8 to March 25.
Okay, it's on.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
We went from January 8 to March 25 this year. We went 11 weeks. We've gone 12 weeks before. We were just able to do 11 this time. And we were grateful for those for those weeks. The purpose of the shelter is multifold. Many of you have heard this before, but we provide shelter, rest, food, safety care for our guests. We learn about their needs and where they at and who they are. We establish trust and build a community, which is just a really valuable thing for these folks. We connect guests to resources. And this year, we're continuing doing more of that. We had challenges this year. Intake was at Lower Rodeo Park, and we were grateful to have that space. But the weather, a river ran through it, as they say. Weather was a big issue. And we would love to work with Ms. Gonzalez, looking for a space that's maybe a little more weather resistant for it for our volunteers and the guests. Again, we had COVID protocols that we had to deal with. Everyone was healthy. And we did the the mask thing again. Availability of host sites and groups is always a challenge and continues to be. Post COVID, some of the churches that that we've been at are doing other things with their space. And when we come, it's, you know, we kind of take up a chunk of space for that week. And groups as well, people just, again, post COVID, are not kind of coming back to group things in the same way that they had been before. But we have wonderful volunteers and volunteer spaces. And how did our guests hear about the shelter? 35% of them from friends and family by word of mouth. 28% of them from social services or church or ministry. And then 21% of them were previous guests from a from a prior year. Where did they live the last six months? 80% of them lived in on the street or in a vehicle. The next thing was emergency shelter was 7%. So really, they were they were out there. We were open for 77 nights, and 32 of those, we had rain. We served 74 guests, which is pretty typical for us. 994 guest nights, an average of 12.6 each night, which was a little higher than than typical. Our highest guest count was 20. We're permitted for 20. I think we hit it a couple nights. We do have some locations where we can't actually fit 20. So most nights spent by one guest was 73, spent almost all the nights there. And 19 of our guests spent over two weeks with us. The average age of our guests was 44 years. We went from 20, a 20 year old to 77 year old. Three quarter or sorry, two thirds were men, a third were women. If you came to the shelter on a given night, it wouldn't look like that. We had definitely a core group of men, 10 to 12 of them who came a lot. Women, not as much. Folsom as their hometown was 8%. The ones that have been in Folsom over 10 years, 16%. Been in Folsom 5 to 10, 6%. And been in Folsom 1 to 1 to 5 years was 13%. So there's there's definitely some who have been here for quite a while. And then another chunk that has been here far, far less long. We did have about three weeks before we closed, the shelter in Citrus Heights, run by Citrus Heights Heart and Rancho Cordova Heart, both closed. And so we had a period of time, it was really rainy, where some folks came from there, but they've, you know, pretty much then eventually went back to the place where they're connected. But we were glad to be able to help them through that time. 9% are veterans, which is, again, not much change over the years. About half of them receive food stamps. 37% have an income of some kind. 6% had a job on arrival, which was lower than last year. Not many were working. But half of them have a cell phone and have emergency contacts. We would love to have all of them have an emergency contact. But 73% of them had at least one health issue. 40%, over 40% have depression or anxiety. So there's just a lot of mental health needs there with that group. 80% of them have Medicaid or Medicare, so they do have some access to to healthcare. Okay, that's our guests. And we also had volunteers, many, many volunteers. It takes a lot of hands to make this happen. Some are here tonight. The Heart volunteers who work every week, at least one shift every week for the duration of the shelter, we have 120 of them. Some of them do intake at intake, others are at the shelter in the evening or the shelter in the morning. There's a night captain every night over all in charge. And then all kinds of support people for sleeping bags and cots for transporting our things from one place to another, variety of of folks who do that, as well as about 15 people who work several months prior to the shelter to prepare it and get it all set up for the year. Host volunteers from our host groups, it's about six to nine volunteers each night. So by my figuring, it's somewhere around 200 ish additional people involved from all different parts of the community. Each night, we have a greeter, people provide dinner, showers, laundry if we have them, stay overnight with our guests. Lots of people doing pieces of work with these folks. Lots of people interacting with our guests. And it's a beautiful thing. So here's just a few pictures. Intake, we were at Lower Rodeo Park. The picture on the left is a sunny day. The picture on the right is a rainy day. And we saw a lot. It was kind of rugged for for both the guests and the and the volunteers. YK worked there and and Sarah, I think, as well. And so experienced some of that. But we were thankful for it. I really hope that we can find a more weather resistant spot to be at for everyone's well being. We were at Oak Hills Church, Lakeside, Disciples Church, the Bridge Community Church, the Muslim Center of Folsom or Muslim Community of Folsom, sorry, The Gathering Place and Harbor Church. That's where the shelter itself was held. And we had other groups that came along, working in those sites, Reflection MCC, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, Jesus Culture of Sacramento, Trinity Episcopal, and River Rock were also involved providing for these for these folks. We also had some businesses around town. Sutter Street Taqueria, thank you, Rosario, Visconti's, That Damn Place, and Chick-fil-A, each provided the main part of dinner one night a week, very faithfully. And when you see someone who has been living in a car out on the street, most of them around the street, not many of them had vehicles, a professionally made, delicious, warm dinner and a shower are 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 just life changing for their day. We also had resources come. Jamie Penya was there for about the first month, and then her contract ended. And we missed the extra manpower to help people get to county things, find out if they were already connected somewhere else, all that kind of thing. You know, those didn't work out well. But it's it's a valuable service if it's done well. John Ingram from Powerhouse and Jean Schuman from Jake's Journey Home each came once a week to spend the evening with people and connect with them and see what they could do in their in their programs. And having spoken to both of them afterwards, it was really valuable for them and really valuable for us to have them. So we're thankful for that. Dignity Health also came several times to help with any medical issues that questions that they had. SACRT are just key for us. They provide transporting our guests to and from intake to the shelter and back on weekdays, so that we don't have to have additional volunteers to do that. Hampton in a Folsom lends us a van for the entire season. And on the weekends, our van and that van with volunteers take the guests back and forth. The City of Folsom Parks and Rec, of course, for letting us be in that space. And also writing the aluminum structure that flipped in the wind within a couple days was amazing. And now I believe it's anchored, so we'll do that again. And the police department, of course, for those times doesn't happen a lot, but sometimes we just really need them. District Church, which some of you may not know, it's in Eldorado Hills, above the above the movie theaters, they actually provide us a shower trailer for the entire season, which if you had to rent one, it's hugely expensive. And so we appreciate them a lot. So our guests were in a safe, warm, caring environment during their stay. Two of them started work, four obtained more stable housing during the season. There may have been more. These are the ones that I'm aware of. And all of them had the opportunity to connect weekly with Jake's Journey Home and Powerhouse. And three were assisted by the Heart mentoring program. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. I think it's an important service in the City of Folsom to care for for this part of our population, the people who are here and unhoused. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Beverly, for the presentation. I I have a couple of questions for you. So for the years to come, what are the possibilities of having all of the Hearts of Folsom throughout the county work on the same timeframe, so that individuals who are unhoused can get services and and remain within that within their city's housing?
Each each heart organization works within their city, both as far as what their resources are and who is in who is in their city. The other, the ones I know, I think the only ones that do a solid through the season shelter is Citrus Heights and Rancho Cordova and us. One, another one may do a pop up one when it's really cold, but then you don't get all of those continuity benefits for folks. And, you know, they, if they could, I think they would go longer.
Do you know what some of the barriers are for their for them to be able to extend their services? And I'm referring to Citrus Heights and Rancho Cordova.
I don't, I haven't actually asked them that question, but I know some of it is just available space and groups to host it. Yeah, just not able to do it longer. Yeah. So we could do it shorter, but we don't really want to do that.
Do the Heart of Folsoms have, like, do the, is there a communication amongst them in the Sacramento?
There are 10 hearts in Sacramento County. And they do, they they do communicate, not about these kinds of details in general. Because each heart, there are 10 of them, are really distinctly different. North Sacramento, South Sacramento, Midtown, you know, it's, we all have pretty unique situations and abilities. So we do definitely, you know, talk.
Sure. Some of the feedback that I received, it was when the other cities had their Heart of Folsom program end, and we still had, I think it was, was it a month?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. But ours got cut short. One, is it one week? Because same thing, there was nowhere to host it. And it was, and it was the other cities sending individuals to Folsom where I don't, I think we didn't have enough support, or I think it became sort of an issue with individuals that were being told, oh, go up to Folsom, Folsom will will be able to provide you with housing. And then that kind of became an issue.
Well, I do, just a couple things with that. Next, I'll definitely ask them, you know, when's the end of your schedule, so that we know. I do know, talking with Citrus Heights, that they did not, you know, hand them flyers to say, go to Folsom. Yeah. But people talk and people Google and whatever, right? And they, we definitely handled, we weren't shorthanded. I mean, it was fuller, and it worked amazingly well with a larger census than we would normally have. But we ran with the same staffing that we that we always have. It was just busier. Yeah, for that period of time. It was mostly just for about a week, a week and a half, when the weather was so bad and all that. As I said, as far as we know, they, for the most part, went went back or continued on or wherever. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty mobile population of folks.
I see that John from Powerhouse and Junie from Jake's Journey Home were there once a week. But and the access to phones was at like 47%, I think I, on one of your
On the cell phone. Yeah, something around that.
So, so access to phones is something that is available for individuals who are in house? Is that something that, and that's something we do to sort of help people?
Yeah, I think Powerhouse handles that. And I don't know how often they have it. As I understand, sometimes the person will say they'll be there, but then they they end up not coming. So I don't know, John, John Ingram could be able to speak to that. Because, yeah, I know the service is there. And, and, yeah. And it's hard to know why they don't have phones.
I have one more question about MD. So I noticed that Dignity Health supported the winter shelter. Is, did they send a physician or someone of the medical background to be able to help get prescriptions or?
They they sent, they were not there regularly. But when they did, it was either a nurse, or I believe there was at least one time where there was a doctor and a nurse.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah. We did, I suppose if we'd had people who really needed some kind of treatment, they would have, you know, helped them with that at those times. I don't recall that we did.
That's good, because I, in conversations with individuals who are in house, oftentimes how they get access to prescription rebills is unfortunately visit the ER. And that places quite an impact on people who are already trying to get emergency services. But you have somebody who is in house who just needs a prescription refill. So that's good. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, thanks.
I have a couple of questions, Bev. So let me preface this by saying that I do believe we, as a community, have an obligation to try to help homeless individuals connect to services. My concern is, at what point does this become a magnet? You you talked about four categories, people who, you know, grew up in Folsom or been here different numbers of years. Those numbers, eight, 16, six, and 13, total 43%, which means that over half of the guests that this shelter is serving have no tie to Folsom.
Have been here two months or less.
Okay. It's, I mean, you know, my husband and I have, as you know, volunteered for the past few years. And it always felt like the policy used to be that if you came from a different part of the county, we would let you stay one night, but then we would redirect you back to your heart, right? Because we simply do not have the resources here in Folsom. And because our numbers are so low compared to other parts of the county, the county, who's, as you know, the county who's, as you know, responsible for providing health and human services, is not ever going to put resources here in our city. So has our policy changed? Are we not redirecting folks anymore? It's just kind of come one, come all?
Um, we don't encourage people to stay because there are no services. But people, you know, people are here for a variety of different reasons. And if they're here and we have space, then we will keep them. We don't encourage them to stay. That's, that's something that we lost without having the navigator. Cause the navigator was the one who could really have the time with them and, you know, a professional working full time, right? To help make that happen. Um, so I think people did, I mean, as we know, people who came, they most, they pretty much then went back to the place they, they usually are. But it's a mobile population as well.
I guess that's a co- a conversation also we'll have to have kind of offline with, with our police department. Because my understanding is, you know, we're getting folks coming from, from other agencies. And I don't want to seem cold hearted because I'm not, but again, we don't have the resources here. Um, and so we have to be very strategic about how we use the resources we have. And the feedback that I'm getting from PD and, and maybe the mayor also, because I think this is similar to her line of questioning is folks who are coming to this shelter, who have no tie to Folsom, are then staying here and, and are now homeless on our street for several months. That's the feedback I'm getting.
Okay, cause what I heard from Sergeant G is that, that they're not really for the most part. But I don't know specifically, but there are no shelters, right? Citrus Heights or Orangevale or, or Rancho Cordova. So, you know, it's winter time and they're out there. So, um, you know, we can do what we can. As I said, when we have the navigator, there was more ability to do that. Um, I know Jean definitely, you know, tries to get people if they've got ties somewhere else back there. But that's only so much manpower.
I think it also became a little overwhelming to um, the nonprofits that are here in Folsom. Um, during that time period, I think it wa- it became a little overwhelming for them. And even though we don't have the navigator, uh, um, Junie from Jake's Journey Home, John and from Powerhouse, they can still help facilitate some of the service, to get people into services. Um, I think they actually in the past did it more so than, than some of the um, assistance we got through the navigator. Um, but you, but it was definitely, I think overwhelming just from feedback from them during that time period. And they are a little limited. If you want the help, they will get you the help. But if you don't want the help, then it, it becomes sort of a, a challenge.
Right.
And, and to the community as well.
Yeah, it is a challenge.
All right, any other questions for Beverly?
Oh, I have a comment though. Um, uh, Bev, I know, I, I took the hospitality. Uh, last year and this year, I, I've worked for the last three months. Now I know how to make the, a black, black coffee. Black coffee with the two shots, mocha, hot chocolate with, those are all, you know, those cool things, right? I, I hear my colleagues, you know, what they're saying. Yes, we don't want to be a town to attract all those. But I got to put the, uh, the human nature into this right now. This is a cold rainy peak season for three months. And eighty percent of those constituents has a Medicare or Medi-Cal, some sort of insurance. If they're going to stay outside or somewhere else and they get sick, they're going to go to the hospital and they're not going to pay anything. At the end of the day, it is going to come back to a common citizen. But just putting the, the human nature, you guys are doing a wonderful job, number one, with the human nature. We still have to figure it out how the inflation is coming, whether they are going back to their cities after that or not. I have seen only the last two and a half, three weeks, uh, it, you know, ticked up the number of people. I think we touched the twenty, but then it is a dry season anyway, right?
I think by the end of the season.
By the end of the season.
Had pretty much.
So I think other cities are doing it. I think you already answered that question. You're going to coordinate next time to other hearts. You know, how their program is, it is the.
So that we know.
Three months, we know all those. And certainly I think we'll pay close attention if they are going to be staying here forever. We don't have services here. They all know that. They have to go to the Richards Boulevard in South Sacramento or West Sacramento. They know that already. But in closing though, you know, again, there are so many churches, hundred and twenty volunteers. I know I see Sarah and, you know, myself and Seb Rosario and all these people. It's a lot of work for that human cause. We are taking care of that many individuals not sleeping outside in a cold or wet times. So I just want to take a moment and give you all of you, the heart volunteers out there, a round of applause, friends. Please join me just giving them a round of applause for taking care of all the people. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all. I know it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough thing, but this is part of our town. Yeah.
It is. And, and I see it. I think it is full time job for you for those three months, if not wrong. Because I called so many times for so many things, right? Thank you again. I know you mentioned about the facilities, not knowing if you think, I know you asked the same question, not only city, the intake center, which is the best location. I know there are so many nonprofits helped you before. Trinity Church and those kind of things. Keep your eyes open and ears and let us know. And let the, uh, other people also know we can act faster if anything we can do together collaboratively.
Appreciate that. Yeah, it's, the rodeo park, that area is a, is a good area for it.
Yeah.
Um, for sure. Um, it's the easiest, I mean, it's kind of where people are and they don't have cars, most of them.
Right.
But.
Think about it. Again, we have to respect the residents and communities also. We don't want to put something in the middle of the community where it is causing some discomfort for that community. We got elected to take care of everything and homeless too.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Beverly. Okay. Would the clerk please call the next item?
The next item this evening under scheduled presentations is item number five. Presentation of the City Manager's Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Twenty Four. Proposed operating and capital budgets for the City of Folsom. This is our agency, the Full, the Folsom Public Financing Authority and Folsom Branch Public Financing Authority. And we do have a speaker requesting to speak on this item, Jim Harville.
Hi Stacy.
Just gonna start out if I could, Mayor.
Oh, sure.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to present the City Manager's Proposed Operating and Capital Budgets for Fiscal Year Twenty Three, Twenty Four for your review and consideration. Uh, tonight is your first opportunity to receive and review the document. And Chief Financial Officer Stacy Tumani will provide a comprehensive presentation in just a few minutes. I want to thank Ms. Tumani, also Financial Services Manager Terry Hemley, right here in the front row. Human Resources Director Allison Garcia, Senior Financial Analyst Vaughn Ramirez, Senior Financial Analyst Adam Devlin, Deputy Treasurer John Donahue and Accounting Specialist Helene Wilkins for their tireless effort in the preparation and timely delivery of this budget. It's a huge job. I also wanted to take, to thank the entire executive management team, all my department heads for analyzing, developing, presenting, explaining and advocating for their departmental budget requests. Uh, I am just a few weeks away from completing five years as your city manager. About eighteen years serving in the city manager's office in Folsom, about thirty years in public service in general and thirty years as a Folsom resident. I have seen a lot during these time periods. My time as city manager has been marked by unprecedented financial and worldwide uncertainty and challenges. And I thank all of you and prior city councils for continuing to focus on making tough, yet fiscally prudent decisions that ensure our city's financial sustainability and our ability to provide excellent services to our community because our citizens deserve that. People choose Folsom over and over and over again to live, work and play. And we as city staff work very hard to continue to meet and exceed our customers' expectations. U S A City Council recently reached an important milestone, the creation of the city's first uh, five year strategic plan in many, many years. Long before I was as city manager. We have not had a strategic plan for, for um, a very long time. We did our, did our best to align our proposed budget along those goals and priorities and with the available dollars we had. I will not mince words tonight. Um, as I've shared with you time and time again, for the last four plus years, the city's revenues, although increasing, are not keeping pace with rising costs. We are not meeting staffing needs in nearly every department. We are not addressing millions of dollars of deferred maintenance needs for city amenities and we are not growing our emergency reserve sources. My goal is to prepare a structurally sound and balanced budget that allows us to maintain our core essential services, maintains the historical balance of expenditures by function, which I checked with all of you and you confirmed, and provides a balanced budget that does not draw upon the city's unassigned general fund balance, which we also call our rainy day fund. Although this budget does indeed check all those boxes, it also leaves millions of dollars of capital projects, infrastructure improvements, equipment repair and replacements, staffing and public safety and other departments, and many other items unfunded for yet another year. In our presentation tonight, you are going to hear more detail about our revenues and expenditures. On the revenue side of the house, I know you understand that increases in property tax revenue due to development south of fifty are no windfall, they're no surprise. They were always contemplated and they were always built into our planning and projections. Sales tax revenue is our challenge and its growth has slipped off the very predictable trajectory that this city counted on for many, many years. In terms of expenses, you're going to hear about rising labor costs for our hardworking employees to ensure that we remain competitive in the regional marketplace in terms of recruitment and retention, as well as rising costs in general, which um, government is dealing with and so are private sector businesses. You're going to hear about projections and trends on both the revenue and expenditure side over the next five years that I know you as a city council will carefully assess, analyze, confront and plan for. You're going to hear more about the status of our rainy day fund and the critical importance of adding to, rather than subtracting from that rainy day fund as well as other funds. Preserving the rainy day fund balance to ensure it is available for the unanticipated extraordinary needs of an emergency nature will depend on actual expenditure levels during the next fiscal year and in future years. This will be achieved primarily by our ongoing diligence in adding only critical new positions, our thorough review of all ongoing expenditures and our vigilance in the use of the reserve to ensure it is not used for operational needs when those do, needs do not meet the definition of an emergency. Our job as your staff is to provide, provide you with facts so that you can be as prepared as possible to make good decisions. Our presentation tonight is therefore appropriately fact based, not opinion based. You as the city council are policymakers. Everything we share with you tonight is designed to help you make good policy for what is arguably the city's most important policy document for our organization. As always, we welcome your questions and comments and we will do our best to return to you with well researched thoughtful responses as you move through the process. And I, as I've shared with you before, uh, your next regular meeting on May twenty third will be your first public hearing on the budget and your first opportunity to adopt the budget. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Tumani. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
We've been long awaiting this evening.
Yeah.
I'm Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm happy to present the City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year Twenty Three, Twenty Four. Operating and capital budgets. We began this year's budget preparation similar to years past. We start with our total revenue projection. And so I'll start on the left hand side and we're, and we're moving to the right with the top line. We are expecting a five point four million dollar increase over last year or about five percent. We're also proposing to use capital funds for one time capital purchases. That's over on the far right hand column and that's in the amount of six hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. So that's funding and other funds that'll be transferred into the general fund for purchases. When you add all three of those together, the one hundred and two point four million dollars that we had in this twenty two, twenty three budget, plus the additional revenue that we expect to receive this year and the six hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars in additional funding sources from other funds, we have a total proposed revenue of one hundred and eight point six million. For the expenditure budget, we'll do the same thing going across the bottom. We are working towards that one hundred and eight point six million. We start with last year's appropriation of one hundred and two point four. And first we had to add in about four point one million dollars of cost increases. These are increases needed just to provide the same level of service that we're currently providing. This includes labor costs due to the new MOU agreements, regular annual salary step increases, benefit cost increases, contract cost increases for services and supplies. These have really been affected by inflation. And then we have new mandated costs. So I'll go over all of those in a lot more detail on the next slide. But that got us, just with, with that addition there, up to one point six, one hundred and six point six million dollars of expenditures just to maintain our current level of service. With that one hundred and six point six million already spoken for, it left the city manager with about one point three million for new budget additions. So you have in the next column, the addition of the two CSO positions that were added as an emergency appropriation in this current fiscal year. That's two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So now one point one million remains to be allocated across all department requests for this year's budget. And as a note, the budget committee received about fifteen million in new requests for this year. And I would say that's, that's probably low because I know many department heads withdrew some of their requests just so that we could all focus on the very top priorities. So there were many more needs even than what were brought to the table. So first we'll start with that four point one million dollars and, and what makes that up? The list here are the costs that needed to be added to the budget in order to continue operations at the current level. The top part here is the personnel costs. The first section is three point one million in increases to salary and benefits. This was all of the new MOU agreements, regular annual salary step increases and benefit cost increases. We're also proposing to add seven hundred thousand dollars to the fire department's overtime budget. This is in that continued effort to bring that line item closer to what overtime is actually costing the city every year. Uh, for example, this year, the overtime budget is at one point six million and we're projecting to be at three million dollars by the end of the year. We talked about this during the last budget cycle that it's consistently over what the line item is. And so we come to the council saying they're over budget. So this needs to be trued up to something that's a little closer to what actual is. So this partially bridges that gap, bringing it a little closer to what's happening every year. Thirty five thousand dollars is added to the police department budget for overtime for the same reason, to get that line item closer to what overtime is costing. And then in the second section here, you have additional operations and maintenance line items that needed to be increased to cover costs that are already occurring. I mentioned in a previous presentation that we haven't been able to do cost of living increases to any of our services and supply accounts in the past four years at least. And so much of this is many years worth of increases and so the line items have been going over budget. So we're, we're making an effort to true them up. That's not all of these though. The first one is for parks and trails maintenance contract increase. This is the projected need to be able to continue that contract is an additional two hundred thousand dollars. This is for the city parks and trails that are maintained by the city, not L and L district or CFDs. We have a hundred and thirty one thousand dollar increase for vehicle maintenance costs. And this is primarily related to fire department vehicles, but, but all vehicles. And we have aging uh, equipment and so it's, it's costing more to maintain it. We have a hundred and ten thousand dollars for increased costs for continuing contracts. Many of these are contracts where we're in a three year agreement and they have escalators in them. And so this is the increase across all departments for those contracts. We have a hundred thousand dollars. This is a, a required expense here for the SAC Regional Fire EMS Communication Center Assessment Increase. And then the true ups down here, eighty four thousand dollars for petroleum costs across all departments. We have eighty two thousand dollars for increases in cellular internet costs across all departments. And again, it's because we have had many years of not increasing those lines. We have sixty nine thousand dollars in increase for software licensing fees. This is a primarily an increase in Microsoft three sixty five that's used by every employee. We have fifty thousand dollar increase in costs for EMS supplies. Fifty thousand dollar increase in utility costs across all departments. That's just what we're paying for, for utilities, for smud and, and others. Thirty seven thousand dollars for building maintenance budget true up. This is what it's consistently costing above what has been budgeted to maintain our buildings. And then a thirty two thousand dollar increase for supplies across all departments to bring that up to what it is actually being spent. So back to this slide, just so that you could see, now we're going to go on to the proposed budget additions. First you have that emergency appropriation for two community service officer positions. So that was two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars as we move into the next year. And then you have one point one million of other proposed additions. These other additions are listed here on this slide just in order of cost. All additions proposed are based on priorities and we did our best to line them up with a strategic plan. As I mentioned, the budget committee had fifteen million dollars in new requests from department heads. That fifteen million included twenty nine requested new positions. But the city manager only had one point one million to allocate after the CSO positions were factored in. So less than ten percent of the requests could be fulfilled. And that means all those remaining needs will have to be deferred. So this list here on the bottom equals our one point one million dollars. The first is funding the final two firefighter positions needed to fully staff the new fire station in the Folsom Plan area. The second is proposing an addition of one new police officer position. So that's in addition to the two CSOs. So three total positions for police. The next is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Station Thirty Five's alerting system upgrade. Station Thirty Five is the last station that requires uh, this upgrade. to function properly with the WestNet server that's installed at the SAC Regional Fire EMS Communication Center. We have $100,000 proposed for the city's network immutable storage. This is a required upgrade in order to be in compliance with state regulations relating to data storage and disaster recovery. We have another position here. This is a maintenance specialist, and we're proposing that we only fund five months of this position, so hired later in the year. That will cost $60,000 for that amount of time, and this will be in the Public Works Department. The addition of this is related to increased demand to serve the Folsom Plan area, and this position was anticipated in the Folsom Plan Area Staffing Plan. We have $60,000 for the Police Department to obtain some additional office space, renting it. It's proposed that it would house the Police Neighborhood Services Division. They've outgrown their current facility, and this $60,000 would cover 12 months of rent on additional office space. And then on another slide, you'll see that we're proposing an additional $100,000 of capital funds to provide money for improvements to this rental space so that it can meet their needs. We have $60,000 proposed for the Finance Department to purchase and implement an electronic budgeting system. This will move the budget from our current paper, Word doc, Excel spreadsheet process to an online format and make the information more accessible to residents and other stakeholders. We have $50,000, and this is a new type of item here, $50,000 proposed as a transfer out from the general fund back to the Risk Management Fund. As you'll recall, we had a conversation about the $3.3 million of that fund that was used as a tool to get through the COVID-19 economic downturn. So this is a small gesture to begin replenishment of that fund. And then we have $50,000 proposed as a transfer out to create an IT capital fund. An appropriation of about $200,000 would be what we would need every year to fully fund IT capital replacements. So this would be a start in funding a replacement program like that. And then in future years, if we have something like a network immutable storage that needs to be done, we'd be able to use that fund and plan ahead for it. An additional technology improvement is $10,788 for public records request software. This will benefit many departments, but primarily the City Clerk's Office, Police Department, and the Fire Department. There's a high volume of public records requests that create quite a burden on staff. They have to manually track, monitor, and produce each set of records. That'll help improve this process. And then last on this list is $10,730 as a proposed position swap in the Community Development Department. To better serve the community, the proposal is to trade one vacant principal planner position to be able to pay for two other positions, a Building Plans Coordinator and a Building Inspector, too. But it's not quite a match as far as cost, so we need to have an additional appropriation of this $10,000 to make that happen. So on this list, at least on the bottom half of the list, you're only seeing positions proposed that are related to growth in the Folsom Plan area. These positions total about $588,000 annually, and they're funded by expected increases in property tax revenue due to that new development. These proposed positions also follow the staffing plan that was anticipated for that area. It was the Budget Committee's goal that the additions proposed in this budget would align with the council's priorities in the newly adopted strategic plan, specifically expanding Police Department facilities, increasing Police Department staffing, and initiating technology solutions. So this budget seeks to partially start addressing those priorities. Excuse me.
Stacy, I have one quick question. You mentioned about the strategic plan, and also you mentioned maybe when we go through this one, it can align your Slide 5 where those numbers are and which strategic plan items are mapping to the dollars? Am I saying it right? If you can move one slide.
Sure, sure. I could go back.
Yeah. No, it's important, right? We all spent so much time on the strategic, and you know, Mayor derived on that one, and we identified first two years, we want to accomplish something. I do see some of the technologies are there already. So it is going to map in the budget in detail when we see it?
Unfortunately, not in the budget. We will be starting that next year. So the strategic plan was approved. The departments over the next year will be working towards being able to map all of their accomplishments and all of their things towards that. Right now, there were just five top priorities. It was looking for funding for additional positions for police, looking for funding for expansion, and then initiating technology solutions. And so this just speaks to those.
I see that one. Thank you. And my last one, on the maintenance specialist. I think you might have said it. Is it a permanent position or temporary we are?
Permanent position, but not funded until February.
Makes sense.
Stacy, I have a quick question. Are some of the things on that list one-time? For example, alerting system for Fire Station 35, is that a one-time cost?
That's true.
Okay. And then the software to move the budget, $60,000?
That would be ongoing.
That's ongoing?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess what on that list is one-time, besides the alerting system?
The transfers could be one-time, those $50,000 transfers, the alerting system, the network immutable storage. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll talk about the last section there, that $697,000 that will be paid for by transfers in to the general fund from other funds. So those include $300,000 for HVAC system replacement for 405 Natoma Station. That'll be from the Capital Replacement Fund. $170,000 for animal exhibits and vet equipment from the Zoo Trust Fund. $100,000 for those of facility improvements for the rented office space for the Police Department. That's from the Folsom Plan Area Impact Fee Fund. $70,000 for the Veterans Hall Roof from capital replacement. $46,000 for Cradle Point Mobile Routers. And $11,000 for children's computers in the library. For your total of $697,000. So again, just a summary of the requests that we received. We received just under $15 million of requests. It was 29 positions. This proposed budget recommends just under $2 million, including that $697,000 of capital costs, and four new positions, plus the two CSO positions. So everything we've gone over so far is now included in this slide for your total budget. So the proposed budget is for fiscal year 23-24 is over to the right, the $108.6 million. And I'll go through each category here so you can see where it's all coming into these lines. Starting with the top line, salary and benefit expense will increase by $4.6 million compared to fiscal year 23. This increases a combination of a few elements. First, it's the addition of the six new positions, two in Fire, the three in Police, and one in Public Works. You then have the true-up to the overtime budgets in Fire and Police. Third, you have the increase for the implementation of the new labor agreements. This was for most of our bargaining units. Only the Folsom Police Officers Association Agreement was included in the fiscal year 22-23 budget. So that happened before that budget was approved last year. So this year doesn't include that as a new item. But all the others are being added in 23-24. And then finally, you have your regular salary and benefit increases for a total increase of 6%. The operation and maintenance budget is proposed to increase by $1.9 million or 7%. This increase is related to the cost increases that were just listed on that earlier slide to continue our current level of service, so all of those true-ups. But it also includes new non-staff proposals, such as the technology upgrades and the facility rental costs. Capital outlay is down this year. The prior budget included about $500,000 more in capital costs that were paid for by outside funds, so Measure A or gas tax. Those are for one-time equipment purchases, and they're just not happening again this year. Debt service is flat with no new debt added. And then we have a new line here at the bottom for those proposed transfers out, $50,000 to replenish the Risk Management Fund, and $50,000 proposed to create an IT capital fund. This slide displays the general fund proposed appropriations sorted by department. So year-over-year, you have that $6.1 million total increase for your total budget of $108.6 million. Starting at the top, the Fire Department is up $3.4 million over last year. That's the addition of two new firefighter positions. We had to fully fund the firefighters that were in last year's budget, because they were only funded for nine months of the year last year. So we had to add that additional three months in. We're adding $700,000 to the overtime budget, and we're implementing their new labor agreement in this budget. Also included is many of those increased costs that were on the true-up slide, I'll call it. So trueing up operations and maintenance costs for petroleum and vehicle maintenance and any of the other categories that were spread across all the departments. Police is up about $617,000. You're not seeing as significant of an increase between fiscal year 23 and 24 for Police, because as I mentioned, their MOU agreement was included in last year's budget. So what you are seeing here is primarily the three new positions. You're seeing facility rental improvement costs, regular salary and benefit increases. And then last year, there was a one-time cost for radio encryption upgrade of $231,000. So that also creates a little difference in what's offsetting and creating this total here of $616,000. Community Development is up by $229,000. About half of that is an increase in contract costs that will be offset by increased engineering fee revenue, and that's for services down in the Plan area. And then you have increased salary and benefit costs. Public Works up $77,000, mostly salary and benefit increases, and some true-ups to operating accounts such as petroleum and utilities. Their increase is a little lower compared to other departments because they had many one-time capital expenditures in the prior year budget that have then been removed from this year's budget. And they also had one vacant engineering tech position that was in Public Works, and it's been changed to a GIS tech position. So it'll still provide services to Public Works, but it'll be working in the IT division. And so now that is in the general government category. So that skews their difference a little bit. So now, general government, it's all of your administrative departments. That includes IT, and also for the purposes here, it includes your Facility Services Division. So the increase here is related to the immutable storage, the Microsoft 365, the budget software, public records request software, and then that GIS technician moving from Public Works into General Government. And then you also had some big increases because the HVAC system at 405 Natoma Station and the Veterans Hall Roof are included in this line item, too. Culture and Recreation includes both the Parks and Recreation Department and the Library. This is up $200,000 for the increase in the Parks and Trails Maintenance Contract, $170,000 for the zoo projects funded by the Zoo Trust, and $11,000 for the children's computers plus salary and benefit increases. Debt service is flat, no new debt. And other expense category is also flat. Just for your information, what is included in there is about $4 million for retiree health benefit costs. You have a tax sharing agreement with the Paladio. You have about $1.07 million in a budget line item for contingencies. And then you have the two transfers out for the Risk Management Fund and the IT capital fund, and then some other smaller items. So here you have the pie chart detailing out the appropriation by department. We did bring this to the council to ask if this still was what you'd like to see in the fiscal year 24's budget. And you said yes. And so what we have here is public safety was at about 50% of the budget. In fiscal year 23, they've gone up to 51% for fiscal year 24. So we continue to propose a budget that maintains that balance of expenditures by function. Now we have your chart of authorized positions. As I mentioned, this budget, this proposed budget includes the addition of six authorized positions in the general fund. You're seeing 6.25 because we did remove a .75 position that was allocated to the Assistant City Manager. That's completely gone. And then you got that additional position in Community Development, because they did that swap. But it's just the six new positions that we talked about for there. And then you have two new positions proposed in Water and Wastewater. These were anticipated in the rate study. It's a Water Distribution Operator 3 and a Utility Worker. And for Solid Waste, a Solid Waste Manager, a Refuge Driver, and an Environmental Specialist. Now, moving on to look at revenues. This slide has our fiscal year 22-23 budgeted revenues, and then the proposed revenues for fiscal year 23-24. We are projecting total revenue, including those transfers in, to be $108.6 million. Property taxes are expected to continue on their current trend line and increase over the prior year by about $4 million. Sales tax is estimated to be $29.3 million. That's $1.4 million over last year's budget. But it's just about $900,000 over where we're projecting sales tax to be by the end of 22-23. This projection of $29.2 million does not account for a possible recession, which would affect sales tax first, where we would see the impact. And this is just accounting for the sales tax growth that we expect to see next year and where we think will end 23-24. Transient occupancy tax from our hotels is projected at $2.38 million, so a little bit of growth over this year. Charges for services are proposed at $12.2 million. This increase from the prior year is mostly due to Parks and Recreation programming revenue. It has now fully recovered back to pre-COVID levels, so that is now reflected here. And then licenses, permits, and VLF is proposed at $12.8 million. It's a slight decrease from the 22-23 budget, but it's mostly due to anticipated just continued slowing and what we're seeing for building permit activity from the really high levels that we saw in the past couple of years. This chart is the trends for our major tax revenues. Property tax is in the blue line. It's really just moving upward at that consistent pace. It's picked up just a little bit in the last three years, as we saw as the Folsom Plan area is now bringing in property tax. And then sales tax is in the gold line there, showing that slower trend of growth that I've been reporting for the last several years. And as we move forward into fiscal year 24 and beyond, we expect that trend to continue. And then here you have your unassigned fund balance by year in the dark blue columns, and your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, displayed by the red line. And I have this chart expanded back to fiscal year 2006. I think it's important to look at the fund balance historically and where we were back at our high point in fiscal year 2006. We had $16 million in unassigned fund balance in cash, but it was 26.6 as a percentage of expenditures. We're now projecting for fiscal year 24 to be at $22.7 million, so higher cash-wise, but as a percentage of expenditures will be at 20.9%. So lower than that 26.6 that we were at in fiscal year 2006. With the trajectory that we're on and the operating deficits that we're projecting in each of the next five years, adding to fund balance at the same pace as our expenditure growth will be difficult. So we'll likely be seeing this red line start to decrease as a percentage of fund balance. And just an example of how that works, just for people that are listening. If you have a 15% reserve policy and you have a million-dollar budget, you have to have $15 million in reserves. This makes 15%. If your budget grows to $120 million, you now need to have $18 million in reserves to meet that 15% minimum. So it's $3 million that you need to add to your reserve, but you're usually doing that as your expenses are growing. So not only do you have to cover your growing expenses, you also have to be setting funds aside to continue to put into the reserve just to meet your minimum. And so that's where we will likely struggle to keep up with funding our operating expense growth and also continue to fund the minimum reserve. And if you were to use the fund balance in any given year, then the required additions in a future year, just to get back to your minimum, are of course larger and more difficult to achieve. So moving on to the enterprise fund budgets. We'll go over projected revenues and proposed appropriations for water, wastewater, and solid waste funds. The proposed budget for the Water Enterprise Fund includes, and we're looking at the far-right column, $18.4 million of program revenues. The proposed appropriation for operating expenses is at $16.7 million total, and $6.5 million for capital expenses. So down there at the bottom, we have our working capital figure that would leave the water fund with a working capital projection of $22.6 million. For wastewater, the proposed budget for this enterprise fund is $11.9 million of program revenues, proposed appropriations of $6.3 million, and capital expenses of $4.6 million, leaving this fund with a projected working capital of $18.5. And then for solid waste, we have revenues of $25 million projected, and their operating expenses at $19.3 million, capital expenses for vehicle purchases at $3.4 million, with working capital of $10.3. And you'll remember that their working capital number was getting very low, and so now they're in a much better financial condition than they were in past years. And we'll take a look at your proposed capital improvement budget for fiscal year 23-24. It's also included in the document that you received tonight, so all the details on this. And this is a long list. These are some of the major projects that are included in this budget proposal. I'll just go through some of the big ones that have the largest total project budget. We have Prospector Park in the Plan area, Sewer Eval and Capacity Assurance Plan, Benevento Family Park, Intelligent Transportation System Master Plan, Orangeville Avenue Mountain Oak Pump Station, I think it is, Water Treatment Plant Caustic Soda System Project, Tower Tank Rehab Project, Basin Forest Sewer for Phase 1 and Phase 2, and then many others. So I'm not going to read this entire list here, but it's quite a program that has been proposed for next year. And you'll see the funding sources. We have $10.5 million for the Enterprise Fund projects coming from wastewater and water. We have grants of $5.2... We have grants of five point two million for Streets Public Works projects, four point six million of impact fees for Culture and Rec Drainage, Streets and Transportation projects, and then four point seven million dollars coming from other funding sources that could be Measure A, gas tax, the General Fund.
Oh, General Fund also in that.
General Fund also. The generals, particularly, it's for the line, the general services of one point four million. It's for fire apparatus.
Got it. Thank you.
So you have twenty-five million dollars in your CIP project budget in total.
Yep.
So that was a summary of the capital improvement plan. It's not, not a lot of detail, but you have plenty of detail in your in your budget book there. So now we have their proposed appropriations by fund in total for all city funds. This is actually what you approve when you approve the resolution, when you do approve the budget, is the appropriation by fund type. So for the General Fund, we've talked about this one, one hundred and eight point six million, enterprise funds at fifty-seven point nine million, special revenue funds at fifteen million, debt service funds at eleven million, capital project funds at twelve million, internal service funds at twenty-two million, and your fiduciary funds at nineteen million for a total citywide budget of two hundred and forty-six million.
Tracy, probably you may have an answer. I know the capital project funds, it's a huge difference between last year and this year. We can, twenty-nine millions last year and this year is twelve millions.
A lot of it has to do with ongoing projects that are proposed. So it's, they, the list back here and I can go back.
I think.
Has to do with total project budget and then what's actually going to be spent this year.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah. Park itself is a ten million plus in that, yeah.
Okay, so now for the last section is your five-year budget forecast. And we've broken this down into ten major budgetary concerns the city is facing as we move forward into the next five years. First up is the the five-year financial forecast. This chart has the blue bars displaying the General Fund's projected total revenues for the current budget as we move forward to fiscal year twenty-nine. And then you have the the dark red line going across the top, and that's projected expenditures. And so where there's a gap is where we have a deficit between our revenue and expenditures. This projection goes out five years, fiscal year twenty-nine, and by then we're projecting a four point six million dollar annual funding gap. This does not include any of the unfunded deferred needs that we've discussed, estimated at that twenty million dollars a year. None of that's included. This is just to continue with the services we are currently providing. And so what does that mean for fund balance? If no cuts are made and there's no new revenue source coming into the city, this is what would likely happen to fund balance. So we'll start with the the blue bars are what we have right now. So in fiscal year twenty-four, we have fund balance with a percentage of expenditures of twenty point eight percent. If we have all of those deficits happen in the next five years, by fiscal year twenty-seven, you have a fund balance that's now thirteen percent of expenditures. And by fiscal year twenty-nine, you have a fund balance that's down to five percent of expenditures. So that's if you continue, no cuts, but no new revenue. If you were to use some of the fund balance right now and take it down, say, to seventeen percent, this just happens quicker. So by fiscal year twenty-seven, you're down to nine percent, and by fiscal year twenty-nine, down to two percent. This is not taken to consideration using the fund balance to increase services, like with recurring expenses, because that's not factored into the projections. And it does not project a recession that would have an additional negative impact on this. Number three on this list of budget concerns is that flattening sales tax trend we're experiencing. The source of revenue is about twenty-seven percent of our General Fund. It has a big impact on our ability to provide services if sales tax revenue growth doesn't keep up with the increasing cost of providing services. And so what we're seeing, the trend line we were on was was much higher than where we are now, averaging two point three percent growth per year. And we'll continue to talk about sales tax, that sales tax revenue growing significantly in the future, even with some focused economic development efforts to bring in new businesses, it's not that likely. And I just wanted to, it's not that, it's not likely to significantly increase our sales tax, is what I'm trying to say. And so right here is some data. We have our top twenty-five sales tax generators, and they're here listed in alphabetical order. It's your, it's your Costco, your Home Depot, your Walmart, your Target, your service stations for gasoline, and your auto mall primarily. And these top twenty-five businesses generate about thirteen million dollars per year. Coincidentally, that's about how much an additional half-cent sales tax could generate. So if the city is trying to bring in additional revenue by bringing new businesses into the city, for the city to bring in as much new sales tax revenue as a half-cent sales tax could generate, it's about thirteen million dollars, we would need a whole new set of businesses like these that can generate this level of sales tax revenue. And we would need a second-cent set of consumers to spend and sustain at those stores. Just for example, if you had a second Costco-type store come into the city, you would need a second set of customers so they go to that store. They can't just stop shopping at Costco A and stop at Costco B. That doesn't increase sales tax revenue. So it's just something to think about as we consider revenue solutions, that it's not just one or two large businesses that can get us to to bridge that funding gap. We really need a complete duplication of our top twenty-five that we currently have and a whole new set of consumers as well. Another major concern is that there are millions of dollars. It's estimated at twenty million, and this is an old chart, just because we keep saying the same number. And this was from the Budget Workshop at the City Council Meeting of February eighth, twenty twenty-two. But it's that middle column, and all the departments worked really hard to come up with these numbers of what is, what is the true cost of their operation? What do they really need? And it totals about twenty million dollars a year. And so that's that's unfunded, it's underfunded, and we're adding to that list again this year. The total PLS requests, as I've said three times now, were fifteen million dollars. We're proposing just under two million dollars of additions to this budget, so those needs don't go away. They're deferred, and they continue to accumulate, and the cost to pay for them continues to grow. Budget concern number six is that we have uncertainty of what our future CalPERS contribution requirements will be. Changes in the actuarial assumptions affect our contributions, and right now, especially, the performance of the financial markets affects our required contributions. I have a news release here. This is last year, August of twenty-two, when CalPERS experienced their investment return of a negative six point one percent. And what they said was cities can now expect employer rates for their miscellaneous plans to increase about two to four percent in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, because there's a lag from when you have the the down, the discount rate that doesn't meet the six point eight percent to when we actually have to start paying it. And then they said safety plan employer rates may increase between four and six percent. So each year that the investment returns do not meet CalPERS six point eight percent set rate, the city will see an increase in their required contribution in future years. This is a concern because it's unpredictable, it's out of the city's control, and we have to pay it. Number seven is just something that we need to keep in mind. There are growing service level needs in the Folsom Plan Area that will require additions to future budgets. We have to be planning for those in future budgets, so we can't use property tax growth to support current General Fund operations. So we need to have that available to fund these upcoming additions. So right here, the blue box is positions that have been added either in this current budget as we finish up for the the fire station, and we add a position in public works, or it was added in previous budgets. So Phase One, which was the first five years, has been funded. We're now getting ready to move into Phase Two. And so if we do fund this additional police officer in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we're getting ahead, and we're funding one of the four that was proposed for Phase Two. But that still leaves us with seventeen positions that we have to be able to pay for in this next phase, forty-three positions in the phase after that. It's just a significant amount of of positions that need to be added to the budget in order to provide services to that area.
Tracy, what is the approximate duration for each phase?
About five years, about five years.
Thank you.
Concern number eight is remaining competitive in the region related to employee compensation will be difficult. During recent negotiations with our labor groups, the benchmark used for determining total compensation included neighboring cities that have implemented local sales tax measures. It's unlikely that the city will be able to keep up with those compensation packages and rank where we like to rank when we're competing with them, when we're competing with cities that have vastly different financial resources. This inability to afford to compete with our neighbors could become an issue as it relates to recruitment and retention of quality candidates. Number nine, we have a depletion of our reserve funds. We used reserves from the Risk Management and Compensated Lease Funds during the past three years to minimize the impact of COVID-nineteen on the General Fund. That was a recessionary tool. We used it that way, but when the city would then want to replenish these funds as the economy recovers. So just some notes of where we're going here. At the January twenty-fourth meeting, we recommended that the City Council consider a transfer of unassigned fund balance in the General Fund to the Risk Management and Compensated Lease Fund to replenish the reserves. We did not move forward with that recommendation. It was suggested that maybe we pay it back over time. So now the Risk Management is projected to be at four point two million dollars at the end of this year, down from eight point six million. And the Compensated Lease Fund will be at a negative two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, down from just under a million. We are recommending that fifty thousand dollar transfer in this budget to begin to replenish the Risk Fund. That, but at that rate, it'll take sixty-six years to rebuild the reserve that was used during COVID-nineteen. And then the last two bullet points here, we we just received this information in the last two weeks of creating, reading the budget document, that the rates for our property insurance are expected to go up thirty to forty-five percent. That's a five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar increase to the General Fund. The Risk Management Fund will cover that. That was not expected. And we also have an Employee Health Insurance that's projected to increase thirteen point five to fifteen point five percent. We just found out about this. That'll be one point six million dollars. It was only a two point one percent increase last year, so we couldn't have projected that. So that's a two million dollar total increase that'll be funded from the Risk Management Fund using half of the reserve that we have left. So we're using fifty percent of that in one year. These costs in here are unpredictable, and this is likely to happen again.
Can I clarify something just for those that are watching? When you say half of the reserves, you're meaning half of the reserves for the Risk Management Fund, not the General Fund?
True, the four point two million.
And the Risk Management Fund, in the past, before the last ten years, we have used the General Fund reserves as the reserves. So it is in addition to the General Fund reserves is the Risk Management Fund. So, yeah, I don't want people to freak out that it's half of the General Fund reserves.
No, not half of the reserve. No, the half of the four point two million dollars we have left in the Risk Management Fund. So if that were to happen again, where we had a two million dollar increase, the General Fund would have to pick it up all in one, all in one year. And then low reserve levels threaten the city's ability to provide essential services in the future and ensure future obligations are funded. This chart here shows Rancho Cordova, West Sacramento, Elk Grove, Roseville, and then ourselves. And what we have is annual General Fund expenditures on the top line, our our new budget here of one hundred and eight point five million, and then the General Fund Reserve, which is what we most of the time are talking about. And so for Rancho Cordova, they have a nineteen percent General Fund Reserve, thirty-six percent in West Sac, twenty-nine percent in Elk Grove, thirty-one percent in Roseville, and we're at about twenty-one percent right now. But that does not take into consideration their other reserve funds. These other reserve funds are not legally restricted funds. They're funds that these cities have set aside to be used for something specific that they have decided on, but it can be used for emergency purposes. When you add those amounts of total reserves in, Rancho Cordova has sixty-six million dollars or eighty-eight percent as a percentage of General Fund expenditures. West Sacramento is at eighty percent. Elk Grove is at eighty-four percent. Roseville is at fifty-four percent. And the city of Folsom is the lowest by far at twenty-nine percent. The only proposal we have in this budget is adding one hundred thousand dollars to reserves. That's the fifty thousand dollars to create an IT Capital Fund and fifty thousand dollars back to Risk Management. So in summary, we do feel that this budget as proposed responds appropriately to the city's economic realities. Budget decisions were extremely challenging this year, but the goal was, as our city manager mentioned in her opening remarks, to propose a balanced budget that allows us to maintain our core essential services. We wanted to maintain the historical balance of expenditures by department, and we wanted to propose a financially responsible budget that does not draw upon the city's unassigned fund balance, but it still leaves millions of dollars of needs unfunded. And just two final thoughts as we wrap this up and you take these documents home and and consider all of this. First, to safeguard the city's financial future, it is crucial that we prioritize the preservation of our very limited reserve funds, which we just saw compared to our neighbors are very limited, so that we can guarantee that they're available for emergency needs in the future. And second, without a certain revenue solution to the upcoming structural deficits, we must exercise fiscal restraint on the expense side to ensure long-term financial stability of the city. As far as next steps, this was the presentation of the proposed budget. Your first chance to adopt will be at your next meeting, May twenty-third. That's the first public hearing. And then just reminders here, per the city's municipal code, the budget must be adopted by the last working day of the fiscal year. That's June thirtieth. And if the City Council does not adopt the budget by then, then the budget as proposed by the city manager shall deemed, shall be deemed adopted. And with that, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Excellent presentation. There's a lot of good information. And could I just say that I think the city of Folsom is very fortunate to have you as the Chief Financial Officer. You really do know your numbers. You know your business. We are fortunate to have you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So at this point, what, is it open for, is it questions or?
Madam Mayor, this is a scheduled presentation.
Okay, so no question.
So you just receive information.
Very good. And we do have one request to speak. No comments tonight. Okay, all right. All right.
So I would like to ask for some follow-up information for the next meeting. You don't have to answer the questions now. Is that, this the right time? Thank you. So you, the, the, so I'm going to go from the beginning, I think, to the end. What is the breakdown of the three million and change in increased cost of services increases for the personnel costs, salary and benefits? Can I, I would like to see a breakdown of that of which departments and which of those were new contracts, new hires, et cetera. I also would like to know the position swap for the Community Development Department. What positions? You got that.
I could answer that right now for you.
I think we covered that in the presentation.
That was a, that was a principal planner. It's vacant, so that will go away, and it'll be a Building Plans Coordinator and a Building Inspector.
Okay.
So did you need more on that item, Councilor Rorba, or the position swap?
Yeah, I want to see how it's kind of, you know, what positions are moving around. Obviously, it was, I think it was a ten thousand dollar difference. So I understand what you just said, but I kind of would like to see how it's going to play out.
Just want to see total salaries compared next to each other. Would that be helpful?
The position that's not going to be, I think there's a position that's going to be left open.
So we're not going to fill a principal planner, and then we're instead substituting it for two other positions, and we're covering that difference. We had an extra ten thousand dollars to make up that difference.
So I want to, I guess maybe just be prepared to discuss that because I, I won't go into details, but I want to know what the thinking is behind that when there are some issues with our planning.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, and part of this suggestion is to address some of the issues we've had on the building side of things. We are slowing down on the planning side of things, and we are peaking at the building side of things. And so it's shifting resources in the near term, and we happen to have a vacancy that we could take advantage of. So I'll I'll share more at the next meeting.
And I'll have a few more questions on that if you're. Would like to know the reasoning behind not hiring a maintenance specialist until February of twenty-four.
I could answer that now, too. It's going to drive a street sweeper, and there's a long time until we can get one. So we just figured we would wait until the equipment's here, or at least closer to when it's here, before we brought the person on.
So the new equipment is in the budget and the new position is in the budget.
The street sweeper is in the budget, not in the General Fund. That will be funded by a non-General Fund, please, but yes.
We just didn't want to, you know, hire an employee who we're still waiting for what they would be driving.
Breakdown on how you, what, the more detail on the hundred and eight million dollar projected revenue. I know I saw the projected, so I'm not really know, I don't know what I need on that, but it was pretty broad, six million dollars more. I saw the property tax and sales tax increases. So maybe I'll look at it and see if I need a question on that one.
Okay, will you let me know if you need more? Okay.
What is the projected twenty-two, twenty-three revenue? You did the budgeted, but.
I will be bringing a quarterly report to the next meeting, and that will be in there for you.
Okay, perfect. I know there's another question. That's all I have for now.
Okay.
Any other questions that the council has right now?
I do have a couple, which, yeah, I don't need to necessarily have answering it now, but just wondering if you're able to find out any information regarding what sort of hit we can expect to our sales tax revenue if El Dorado Hills is successful in opening up their Costco.
I did ask about that. I asked our consultant, and she said, well, there's so much controversy with that. We can't even take a look and see because they aren't at that point of deciding if it's going in or not.
Okay. And then are we still contributing every year into the Retiree Health Trust Fund? I thought we suspended that maybe during COVID. Have we resumed that?
We've resumed, and in the budget is five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions? No?
Oh, I just have a comment, though. Thank you again. You know, we'll go through this, and we'll come back. And I know it's not that we have to wait until next meeting. If we have any questions, we can funnel through city manager, and you can answer that as well. You know, on slide 34, it helps if you can bring the sales tax around the region. You put the percentages of the, slide 34, sales tax. That much I can probably bring. Folsom is 7.75%, and you listed another half a dozen cities around. Their balance is much better than Folsom.
Oh, and you'd like to see what their sales tax?
Sales taxes are.
Sure.
Rancho Cordova, 8.85% or something. And Sacramento, even though they have 33% more, I think they're almost touching a little over 9%. So it helps everybody to see it. And also, you are giving us some tips, you know, where do we generate the revenue? Just, it helps everybody. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one more.
Yeah, of course.
I think it's more for Elaine. So the pie chart shifted, you combined public safety all in one, but the difference between the fire and police shifted quite a bit. And so I'm curious, maybe you can answer this in two weeks. We're the only city in the entire region that has less police officers than firefighters, so I want to know what your reasoning is with that.
So, okay. Yeah, we can return at the next meeting, but generally, most jurisdictions, very common in the region for, yes, half of the general fund pie chart to be dedicated to public safety. And if you track it over time, it tends to flip-flop, flip-flop back and forth, 26, 24, 25, 25, 24, 26. It's all, you know, relatively close, but we can talk about the specific numbers of employees if you wish.
All right.
Could I just add a comment, Mayor? We are, we'd like to do our best because we want to provide thoughtful, helpful, well-researched information for the city councils. So we would greatly appreciate it if the council does have specific questions, if you could do exactly what you did tonight, but also by the next meeting, May 23rd, which is your first opportunity to adopt the budget. If you could get questions to me by the Wednesday before that meeting, by May 17th, and just shoot me a note and say, these are my questions, that gives me and Stacy and Terry and the team an opportunity to really be prepared and come back to you with the answers to those questions at the Tuesday meeting. But if we're, if they're kind of dropped on us on the 23rd, that's fine also, but we will have to say, we'll need to return to you at the next meeting because we just want to be sure we have our information correct.
Thank you. Okay. All right, would the clerk?
No, again, I'll talk offline, but it's curious, you know, when the truck is, sweeper is coming from the enterprise brand and the person is coming from a general fund.
No, the street sweeper won't be coming from the enterprise fund because this is Public Works, and so they're general fund funded, but the street sweeper will be coming from a non-general fund source, but not enterprise.
Oh, that is another, okay. Well, and also, you know, I'll be, I'll be looking at these, how many pages do I see this one? Right, 800 or so for a volunteer coordinator, you know, resourcefully, not going there, where I can find a little money from there, maybe I can propose and I can negotiate with my colleagues because Folsom is, you know, very prosperous in volunteers and sailing them in the right direction through the volunteering activities to save money for some of the areas. I'll be putting some pay attention on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Would the clerk please call the next item?
The next item this evening is council request for future agenda items.
I'm good.
No, I think city manager, and I talked about the grants, that's one more thing, right? There is only, whatever we get, whatever we get, you know, revenue side. So we'll be talking and see, you know, how and where, if there are any opportunities for some more money coming from federal and state and county to help us. So we'll talk and we'll bring that to the agenda items and see whether we can add some more revenue to our city finances. That was last time I spoke, and the city manager was generous on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would the clerk please call the next item?
No, I have two items. So this is from quite a bit ago, maybe a couple of months, maybe Elaine will remember, when we did an agenda review with Marcus. We talked about doing some water supply mixed messaging updates for the community. I think there used to be a lot of communication on it. And you said you guys would talk about that. I just wanted to know where that is. I want to make sure that this is something that was really important to people during the campaign and to people in general in Folsom. So if you could let me know when that might happen or what's going on with that at some point.
In terms of public messaging?
Public messaging, and we talked about kind of the mixed communication they get, not necessarily from the city, but the mixed messages of, we don't have enough, but we need to conserve, or we have enough, but we need to conserve, and, you know, all of these mixed messages and how to clean it up. I think you probably remember that conversation. I'm sure Marcus does, too. So I just want to follow up on that and make sure that that's kind of on the radar.
Yeah, we do a lot of public messaging related to water supply and water conservation, but we can, and we will continue to push that out.
So Councilmember Warbaugh, are you asking for it to come back as an agenda item for discussion?
Or an update. It was something that the three of us had talked about during, the three of us, meaning Marcus, Elaine, and I, during the agenda review. And it seemed like Marcus was very on board to kind of pushing forward, you know, some more information.
Yeah, we're continually pushing out information about water, but yes, I'm understanding that you want more communication, but not necessarily a council item, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But I'll follow up if, yeah. Also, on the strategic plan, this would happen after the budget is passed, I'm sure, but I would like to see, I would like to see four to six action steps for at least the top five priorities we picked as a council. And meaning not, you've done the action steps, but, or if you have, fantastic, but what are your action steps to get those accomplished within two years? I'd like to see that, you know, by the fall, if possible.
Yeah, so as we shared, as part of the strategic planning process, we'll be before you at least twice a year on strategic plan. Now that we have our new Parks and Recreation Director onboard, we're starting the process of the actual implementation plan, and we'll be sharing our progress on that as we come back to council. That's part of the process.
Well, good. So I'd like to see the action steps so that when you do present to us, you know, we can look at it and kind of gauge how it's going.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Okay, again, Councilmember Warbaugh, is this, are you asking for an agenda?
I would like, well, if she's going to present it, I like to see the action steps, kind of the idea, the goal before you present it. And so maybe it's just a personal email to, not a personal email, to the email to the council, however you want to do it. I just want to make sure there's action steps attached. And then so when you do update us, we can ask you, what's the next step? What's the delay? You know, not necessarily that you caused the delay, but that there's a delay because of this issue, that we know how to hold you accountable to the strategic plan.
Yeah, that was actually exactly what I presented as part of the strategic plan development process, that there would be an accompanying implementation plan. I will come back to the council twice a year with that, and so you can do exactly that. Of course, we would want you to track progress, and we want our public to track progress. That document will also be posted on the website. So this is all a very transparent process because we, what I said over and over again is I don't want to create a plan that just sits there and, you know, we never return to it again, we never mention it again. It's supposed to drive the budget. That's what we tried to do with this budget, even though we just adopted the plan. But going forward, you should absolutely be able to see and track progress. That's the idea.
Again, Councilmember Warbaugh, are you asking for this to come back as an agenda item?
Well, it already, it already would, as I was saying, that we were already coming back with the strategic plan twice a year, so it would happen naturally.
Well, maybe that's a good point. When will be the next update so that we can have?
Is that something that?
I have people ask.
Is that something that you could?
Here's the background. I have people ask me about the strategic plan and how are we going to implement it? And, you know, what you said is great. What was said at that meeting was great. But, you know, to be able to say, these are the first five action plans, I'd like to have that information in front of me to repeat it to my resident, to the, to our residents.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, absolutely. We just adopted it. And so, yes, we will be coming back to you. I don't have a specific date at this moment, but we now have a full executive management team with our Parks and Rec Director hired, and we'll have our implementation plan. We'll come back twice a year. That's always been the plan.
So I would really like this item to stick to items that we're requesting to come back as future agenda items. I think those conversations could be had through our one-on-one agenda reviews or conversations. Would the clerk please call the next item?
The next item this evening is city manager reports.
Thank you. City Works Day rolls in next week. Join us for City Works Day from 9:30 a.m. to noon on Wednesday, May 17th, to learn about equipment and skills required to maintain a city. Attendees can check out the city's construction equipment, police vehicles, dump trucks, tractors, garbage trucks, chipper trucks, fire engines, and more. Visitors of all ages can experience the city's work vehicles, reviewing, exploring, and even honking. City staff will share knowledge about their programs and professions. This is a free event as part of National Public Works Week, and you can learn more at folsom.ca.us/cityworksday. Celebrate May as Bike Month. Bike Month is celebrated throughout the nation. Every May, to highlight the benefits of biking and encourage more people to give it a try, join the Friends of the Folsom Parkway team and log the miles you ride throughout the month of May. And you can find out more at folsom.ca.us/trails. And just a reminder that our library is closed currently due to a new carpet installation. I know our library director, Tom Grenison, has been quite busy over there getting all those square feet of carpet installed, and we will be reopened on May 26th. Thank you, that's all I have.
And you're doing it yourself, right, Thomas?
Yeah, Tom is totally, he's, he has a lot of extra skills, and that's why I hired him, and one of them was carpet installation, so, yeah.
So I don't have any updates at the moment. I think we had a great two-by-two with the Folsom School Board. There's some exciting things happening there. But I, something personal, I had the great privilege of going to the Sacramento Valley National Cemetery yesterday, yesterday is Monday, to bury my husband's uncle who served in the military, to the Marine Corps. He was a colonel in the Marine Corps by the time he retired, a pilot. And it was an incredible honor. He passed in December. But to be there, to witness the people that served, all those people coming in to honor their veterans, and so in Jack Tuttle's name, I just, I, he was a wonderful serviceman, father, uncle, uncle-in-law, and I just want to honor his name.
Thank you. Councilmember Aquino?
I don't have any report, but I'm curious where the students in the back two rows go to school.
Yeah.
Folsom High. You know the rule here at Folsom City Hall, you got to stand up and sing the school song when you come.
Awesome.
Well, I think we got to start a new tradition.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Chalan Charla?
Yeah, you know, I'll start there. I think, Sarah, I think Lamb, you know, he's talking to me a couple of times. I said, you know, this is the perfect opportunity, youth, come and listen how the dollar is moving in Folsom. He brought another half a dozen people, you know. Lamb, just raise your hand. I just want to kudos to you. 80,000 people are watching. Thank you. Right? And it's important, right? You know, we got to involve the youth, the next generation in this process. And as Tracy mentioned, we need some ideas where we can get more money, you know, help us, right? Thank you again, Mayor. I attended the memorial, you know, the week, the annual event yesterday. It was so wonderful to represent, you know, our city there and our PD department, you know, they are saluting to those nine fallen officers, you know, while they are serving the residents last year in 2022. It's, you know, heart-touching and, you know, feeling the parents and the kids and the moms. Yeah. Thank you, PD, for being there and being at the front, saluting to the, you know, all those families. That's one. And I love my mom. It's a great event. You know, people are, you know, still asking, Folsom is doing something different, right? People are coming from Lord I, you know, Elk Grove, you know, all those cities. I think the previous one was I-String. When it came, that's what, you know, it drives, you know, family-friendly neighborhood, and that helps our community as well. And again, you know, big kudos to Elaine and, you know, city administration for doing all those. That was one. That one was put together by the Parks and Rec team, but with, you know, great support from everyone else as well. I think I gave a brief update last week, last session. I was in cap-to-cap DC, and it was a wonderful event, and I learned so much, and I built so much relationship with the neighboring cities' mayors and council members and the city administration. It's more of a collaboration going on in this region. But people did, a couple of them commented, you know, Folsom is still maintaining the lowest sales tax. It's good and bad, both, right? You know, we are feeling the pain by maintaining the low sales tax because we are touching the red mark on the expenses and spending as well. So we'll see how things are going in our favor. But otherwise, Mayor, you attended last year, and it was a wonderful tip to DC. Thank you again, everyone. Thanks to the youth and Folsom. Good night.
Okay, thank you. I want to welcome Kelly Gonzalez to the city of Folsom. The Park and Rec Department is a vital part of what makes Folsom so special. I also attended the ground opening of the SEVI and NEVA, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Semirelli Procedure GI Suite at Mercy Hospital a few weeks ago. And I want to give Lisa Housman, the hospital president and CEO of Mercy, a shout out for just the amazing work and the investment that the hospital continues to provide to our community. I was invited last week to attend the premiere of Beyond Homeless: Finding Hope, and I'm sure some of you may have been invited, but I did go, and I just have to say, you know, San Francisco is my hometown. I was born and raised right in the heart of the city. And so the movie depicts several of the, sort of the issues of what has happened to the city of San Francisco. And when I look at Sacramento, people always ask me, why are you, you know, what makes homelessness something that you're so passionate about? And I tell people, it's because I don't want the city that I currently live in to become what it's become of San Francisco. And that movie is really good.